City Council to order at 5:30 on April 24th. Would everyone stand for the pleasure of leaders?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Talk about the amendment.
Yep. Okay. Amendments to the agenda, I only know of one. And we would be adding a G. We're changing G in there. That's amendments to the zoning and subdivision regulations to H. And then we're adding another G, which would be rapid flashing beacons. We have to revisit that subject. So we'll move on to visitors. Jay Clark from the...
So, Randy, at the last meeting, at my recommendation, the city council deferred action on the first-class liquor license and live entertainment permit for City Limits nightclub with the hope that Jay Clark, Vermont State Liquor Inspector, could attend. And so he's here. Jay and I have had a little discussion on the phone. He's very aware of the city council's schedule, that there's a 6 o'clock public hearing on zoning amendments. And so what I was really hoping to do tonight was to at least spend a little bit of time in more of a, I'll call it a clinic, for lack of a better word, to just have a little clearer understanding of the role of the local control commissioners and their duties and responsibilities. And also, one of the things, just so that I don't forget, we actually have two matters tonight that relate to liquor licenses. One deals with City Limits, and then the other deals with Ian Heising related to Anadote. And it's really more of a question on my end about his. His might be an easier one to answer, is we have an application for a second-class license to sell for off-premise consumption out of a location that already has a first-class license. And I don't know that we've ever had that type. And so we would appreciate being informed about how that all works and that that's okay, because we certainly, you know, don't want to have the local control commissioners approving something that is outside of the regs. And because I knew that that used to be the case, and maybe that's no longer the case.
If they had that section, I can speak to it a little bit more knowledgeably.
I can tell you for a fact that that type of license does exist, and that type of setup does exist. So we wouldn't be breaking any molds or exploring any new territory. It's something that has happened already. It does exist in other towns and cities. I can think of a few examples in the Burlington area specifically, where the bar also serves growlers. And that's kind of, I think, what Ian's intentions are, is to serve growlers as well and have a second-class setup within the bar, setup that he has already. It's going to be stanchoned off, or there's going to be some delineation of that second-class area, so that he can serve those growlers to the public. And I think that's the extent of... I'm sure he didn't get clarified, but I think that's the extent of what he intends to do with that.
So is it my understanding that the so-called serving of a growler, X number of ounces in that, that a growler can't be purchased and consumed on premise? Or could you purchase and consume it on premise and also purchase it? Could you drink half of it and leave with it? Or how does that work?
No, it has to be purchased, filled, and sealed by the clerk dispensing it, and then it's to be consumed off-premise.
Okay, all right.
And if at some point he goes over the line of becoming a manufacturer, then that changes things yet again. And that's, you know, if that happens, that would change things up a little. Because I know why I'm saying this, is because there are establishments in the Burlington area that are also manufacturers. And if you walked into those places, you may see something slightly different than what we'd expect to see over at the Anadote Bar. With the Anadote Bar, we'd want a clear delineation of the spaces, the second-class space versus the first-class space. In the manufacturing environment, those two spaces can be mixed a little bit more because of the type of license that they fall under.
Just a question. What moves from him being a brewer into manufacturing? Is it based on volume of product?
It's more about, I think, the location, actually producing at that location.
Okay. All right, understood.
The other topic, you know, that I had recommended the board to defer action on City Limits nightclub, in light of the fact that we have a memo, memorandum from Chief Merkel relative to some documentation, if you will, of overserving related to his bar. And the, as I mentioned to the council, that the timing of these kinds of things is a little, I don't want to, I'll use the word awkward, for lack of a better, because, you know, I think that if these kinds of things came up in the middle of October and brought to the local control commissioners, you know, then you deal with it. And however, in this instance, they have a pending renewal application.
Yes.
And the other thing that, you know, you and I had talked about, and what it is, it's in Title VII, Section 210, which is the suspension revocation statute. And when I read it a little more carefully, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that really the local control commissioners don't have the authority to suspend or revoke a license. It's more that they would file a complaint with your department, or how does that process work?
So the local control commission can revoke and suspend licenses, but they have to go through the same hearing process that we do. And I would again defer a little bit on this, because procedurally, there are some things that I may not be aware of that the Attorney General's Office handles on our behalf, because the Attorney General's Office is the agency that prosecutes our cases. There is a whole system in place, though, that has to be adhered to when it comes to the process of hearing these cases and trying them and seeing them through and issuing some kind of sanctions as well. So I would say that that's a conversation where if you had your own council that you could defer to and then have them speak to the AG's office, that would probably be the best bet to figure out if it's something you want to do. I know that other cities have looked at it, and then once they've had those conversations, they've decided not to go that route, because they found it to be too cumbersome a process, timely and expensive, to the extent that they've changed their mind completely and just put it back on us.
So, and then the sanctions, if I read it, there's a statute that deals with renewal, and then there's a statute dealing with suspensions or whatever.
Yeah, I printed some of those out in case you folks didn't have those. I don't know if I have enough for everybody, but the statute sections that cover...
So my question is, is it your opinion, or the department's opinion, that relative to the renewal of a license, if there is some thought that maybe a particular license shouldn't be renewed, based on some information, do you view the act of non-renewal as being the same as a revocation or suspension? And therefore, a hearing is required for renewal? So I clearly understand that if somebody has a license, and if it's going to be revoked, suspended, there's a hearing process. My question is, is that if that license is due to run out on March 31st, relative to a renewal, is the same process expected of both the local control commissioners and the department?
Yeah, I don't think the two processes are exactly the same. I think, you know, a renewal, the option to renew a license, the first step in that is always on the city or town's end, if they want to renew that license. That's solely the decision of that board or that council. Again, though, I still defer to your own city attorney on that, and just make sure that you're abiding by whatever rules that I may not be aware of when it comes to that renewal process or choosing not to renew. I do know for a fact that cities or towns have opted to hold sanctions against licensees when they've come for renewal. They've put stipulations on their license, saying things like they had to be closed by a certain time, or things like that. They've put stipulations on the license at the time of renewal, and those have stuck. Those are things I know that are within the rights of the board to do. But I don't think they're the same exact thing as a hearing itself.
So what if we just renew the license? What process will the Liquor Control Board be doing, given the three violations?
So I did bring a copy of what we call their yellow card history for City Limits. And that basically shows from the time that the license was issued back in 1999 to present day, everything that's happened at that establishment, any violations that have occurred there, or warnings, or anything like that from our office to that establishment. And I'm more happy to provide that to you guys, that is public knowledge. And as far as those last three violations that we had, the most recent ones that I can speak to, those are public record now. They have been adjudicated. Those all resulted in fines. And those were paid, from my understanding, and I think that's where we're at the moment. So there was nothing, there was no suspension revocation? There was just monetary fines issued, and those fines were paid.
So as far as the Liquor Control Board is concerned, it's done at this point?
That's correct.
So that if we were going to do anything, then, as you indicated, we'd have to go through a process similar to what process you would have in order to revoke a license?
Yes, but having said that, when it comes to these particular violations, the ones that were heard, those have already been heard. So you couldn't have a hearing in regards to those again, because, you know, that would be double jeopardy, so to speak. And I have no problem telling you this, and I'm sure Brett will tell you the same thing, Mr. Ward will tell you the same thing, is that we had a conversation, it was pretty straight to the point, that if there was another encounter that I had with him in the near future that was similar to these, then I would be pursuing a board action against him in lieu of a fine next time.
Okay. So then, basically, we should just be renewing the license, because everything has...
That is totally up to you. That is not, I have no say in that. That is a decision that solely falls on you folks. And again, I would still strongly suggest you talk to your own council about that, just to make sure that you follow, you know, all the rules that pertain to that, if there's any concerns that I'm not aware of, that they may be aware of.
Brett, would you like to make any comments?
No, sir, I think I'm good. If you guys have any questions, I would love to answer them, but as far as that, I think I'm okay.
Well, it's kind of up to the council. If someone wants...
So you want to, from an agenda standpoint, you just...
Yep.
Are we moving on to...
We will be moving on.
Okay, because I just need to make a disclosure, that my employer owns that property. So if we're just in the general discussion up top regarding a visitor, that's fine, but if we're moving on, I just need to make that disclosure ready.
Okay, thank you. Anybody feel that he has a conflict? No? Okay. I guess we'll move on to the minutes, approval of the minutes, before we get to the business items.
So Jay wants to...
I'll make a motion to...
He may want, Jay may want to leave, if you're all set with him.
Oh, yes. Okay. We're all set. Just feel free to leave. Thank you very much for coming, by the way.
Or you can stay.
Or you can stay. Our city council meetings are always so exciting.
I've heard.
Yes, Brett?
Yes, sir. I was just curious, will we be voting on the license, right, tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of April 10th.
I will make said motion.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Okay, any changes to the minutes?
Oh, man.
You've got to be kidding.
Times in a row.
Okay, seeing that there are no changes to the minutes, all those in favor of the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes have been approved.
I really feel as if the standard had to have gone down.
I like it.
We have citizen comments on anything other than what's on the agenda. Of course, if you don't have a copy of the agenda, you don't know what's on the agenda. Does anybody have any comments? And I can tell you whether it's on the agenda or not. No citizen comments? Okay, we'll move on to business. And the first item of business is Item A, City Limits First-Class Liquor License and Live Entertainment License. I'll need a motion from someone to get it on the table.
I'll move that we renew City Limits license.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
So if you're acting on the live entertainment permit as well, I'm assuming, Lynn?
Absolutely.
Okay, and there is a standard condition, which I believe relates to our live entertainment relative, that doors be closed during the time of live entertainment. So I'm assuming that that is the standard condition?
Yes. And what are the hours of operation?
You're talking about operation or live entertainment?
Live entertainment is 8:00 a.m. until 2:00 a.m., seven days a week. And the type of entertainment is bands, DJs, comedians, clowns, karaoke, jukebox. For the point of discussion, I would ask that it seems like if we could renew, or we almost have to renew, is that the hours be changed, could be changed, or limited?
I believe they could, at least by what the liquor inspector said.
Does it say what time the problems all happen?
The latest tour just after they left, so it's not early time. It's over-serving, which seems to be kind of problematic, the 21-day suspension in 2003, seven-day suspension in the first week of 2014, three over servings last month, which I have some problems with.
Joe, and I, first, and I, we could have certainly brought this... I believe that there is some kind of alcohol consumption permit in our either ordinances or policy. Do you recall? Because I remember a time when Virgin's did not follow the state statute of 2:00, 2:00 a.m., and there was a policy or something, a special policy for the city council. You're not really recalling that?
Not for outside consumption.
No, I'm talking about just flat-out first-class liquor licenses. Because I think there was a time, because of our winter parking ban, that we were, on the one hand, having people allowed, they had to have their cars off the street, but then we had a bar that was serving until 2:00 in the morning. And frankly, I'm sorry, you know, the only reason why I bring that up, Lynn, is that if there's a, if we have a policy in place, I would be recommending that you look at that policy, as opposed to putting a restriction on a particular license. It's just my feeling.
And that's what we used to have, was a restriction, no sales after 9:00 p.m. from a second-class license. And because we had the problem on the Green, so citywide, we didn't allow people to sell alcohol from a second-class license after 9:00.
Okay, so anyway, I, you know, it wasn't about a first...
It wasn't a policy, it was just a restriction on all second-class liquor licenses.
But we don't have that now?
No, they did away with it. It was, in effect, for three, four years, and then someone finally came. The sub shop was gone and all that stuff. The character changed, and someone came back to the council and asked to release that.
It would seem, if I'm interpreting the inspector correctly, that the Liquor Control Board or the Liquor Commission has already adjudicated it, basically. They've, the citations have been issued, the fines have been cited and paid, and it's done as far as they're concerned. So if we want to do anything locally, then I think we are obligated to go through a hearing process. And I think that that could be complicated. So I think we're kind of in the position where it is what it is, you know? They've done the adjudication of these particular incidents, and we can only look at whether there's going to be more, hopefully not.
I agree. I'm here with that.
Any other comments before I call for the vote?
Well, education regulation number one, I'm going to just paraphrase it, says duty of all licensees to know and ensure their employees know the laws and regulations relative to sale of intoxicated beverages. Infractions shall be deemed prima facie evidence of the licensee's unfitness to hold the license. And I've just got, you know, the only revocation I've seen recently that the board, that Liquor Control Board did, was somebody got in the car, killed themselves and their passenger. The blood alcohol of that patron was 1.7. We have the two that the police gave citations for were up in the 2.7 to 2.9 region. So they revoked when someone was twice the blood alcohol level, and we've got two, three times the blood alcohol level. So is the revocation because they drank too much, or because they finally got killed? And I'm not really crazy about waiting until somebody dies before anything happens. On top of the fact that we are aware of this problem, if somebody, if I know somebody who dies in a car accident because of this condition, I'm going to guess that they're bringing this city as one of the plaintiff, or one of the people they're going to sue, because we knowingly allowed a license to continue on when we knew that there were problems. And that concerns me, that there's a possibility of, even if the liquor board is not going forward, that we're going forward, it could be opening us up to liability later. And maybe not, maybe our council will say, no, that's not how it works, but that's concerning to me.
Was that revocation by the local board?
No, it was the state liquor...
The state did it?
Yes.
I think it would be fair to say that none of us want to renew this. I don't think that's, you know, I don't think that's a secret in any way. It's been, there's been more, you know, these incidents, but there's been other kind of smaller incidents that disturb the neighborhoods and do everything else. But as much as I would like to just see it all go away, it's not going to. And it doesn't seem like, from Jay coming in here, that we have the ability to do that, not without spending a lot more money than we've already spent on lawyers this year. And I agree with Mark. I think it's very discerning to think that somebody has to die before something happens. But if all this information was correct tonight, I think our hands are tied.
Brett?
Yeah, just for the record, I just wanted to make it clear that nobody's died...
I didn't say that.
...leaving City Limits nightclub, I want to make that clear. Second of all, I've been in business for 19 years. Nobody's died in 19 years. And as far as the minor complaints, I don't know the lady's name, but on council, I haven't received a noise complaint since I've been there 19 years. There hasn't been a fight in at least six, seven years. The Virgin's Police Department has not been called to my establishment in multiple years for any legitimate reason. By legitimate, I mean, I shut somebody off at the door, they did not want to cooperate, they left, they called the Virgin's PD and said that I have minors in my establishment. Virgin's Police showed up, we walked through my establishment, there was no minors. So that's what I mean by legitimate. But I heard the lady speak about numerous minor complaints. I'm just curious to what those are.
I reside right over here at 23 South Maple Street, adjacent to 48 Green, and I personally, over the course of 15 years, have called the police no less than a dozen times. Those calls go to New Haven, not to Virgin's, which is maybe why you're not hearing from George and his team.
Okay.
So I can speak to it personally.
Okay. But I just, I've never received a noise complaint. Give me your number. And I just wanted to make sure real clear that nobody's died leaving City Limits nightclub.
I didn't say they have. I just said I don't want to have to wait until somebody does. And it seems like Liquor Control waits to revoke the license until there's a minor, and I think that's...
So it looks like Liquor Control waits.
Well, I mean, that's the only revocation I saw in recent years. And the blood alcohol of the person who died was less than two, the blood alcohol, the two citations that Chief Merkel...
And just for the record, one of the people that was leaving was walking, that were not driving. One of these three complaints?
Right, I know, I know. They were still quite inebriated and should never have been served the amount they were.
They were served one drink at City Limits, they were there for 45 minutes. I have videos of them.
And they should never have been served.
Let's not continue this dialogue here back and forth. So I guess we have the vote before us. Are there any more?
Thing that I'd say is, you know, a long time ago, I first ran for city council, I got some really good advice from Dick Burke, who'd been mayor for quite a few years. Dick told me, he said, "Well, the most important things that I could do is try to keep this out of court," because that's expensive. And I think that in this instance, you know, I'd rather let it rest with Liquor Control and City Virgin's. I think that if we don't, I'm not an attorney, but I think that it could potentially get expensive, if we went down that road.
So one of the things, Mark, I really, I don't know about the whole liability thing, that's why we have covers with BLC to pass it, and we could go down that avenue, but I do think that what the city council should do, regardless of whether or not there's any exposure here or not, is I think that the city council should formally send that memorandum to the department, all right? That way, that...
Because I think you're absolutely right, for the city council to be in a position of having information and doing nothing, all right? I would agree with you that that isn't good. And I, but I think that the city council instructing, you know, me to forward this memorandum to the department, I would not regard that as doing nothing, okay? And I don't know that it makes you feel any better, but it's certainly something other than doing no...
Mel, what department exactly?
I would send it to, I would send it to Jay's, to the liquor board.
Okay, I didn't quite...
Yeah, yeah. And I really think that in the future, that really, and it's not about Brett, it's about any bar in this town, all right, that has a license, that if George has information relative to over-serving or anything that can connect the dots back to a bar, I would, you know, I should get a memo, and that, and we should be dealing with it, so. How you doing with that, Randy? Pretty good?
I thought I shut it off.
Comes with a manual. So anyway, that would be, you know, a follow-up, you know, if this council is inclined to renew this license and permit, I think a follow-up directive of that memo in our record would at least show that the city council didn't do nothing.
Then can I add that to my motion, Lynn? Please?
Seconded, okay. So we're ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
One opposed?
One has stayed, Randy.
Okay.
So that's four in favor, it's a pass.
Okay, the motion passes. All right, let's move on to...
5:59.
Oh, yeah, wonderful. Thank you for reminding me. Since it is within less than a minute of when I have to start the hearing, I'm not going to go to the next item. So I think we'll move on to the hearing. I'll call this, open up this hearing on the proposed amendments to the zoning and subdivision regulations. I'll just read the notice. Notice is hereby given to the residents of the city of Virgin's, owners of land within said city and other interested persons and parties, that the city council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 24, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. in the Virgin's Fire Station Meeting Room, as required by 24 VSA 4442. The purpose of the public hearing is for the city council to hear and receive testimony regarding the amendments to the Virgin's zoning... regarding the amendments to the Virgin's zoning and subdivision regulations as proposed by the Virgin's Planning Commission. A copy of the full text and accompanying map is on file in the city clerk's office for public examination. So, the hearing is open on the amendments. I don't, I would rather not have to go through all of the amendments, but it basically affects the whole city in one way or another. Would you like to make any comments on it? Shannon?
Not really, I mean, only if there are other comments or questions regarding any of the proposed amendments. I think we, at the last public hearing, we covered most of it, but certainly we're ready to move forward with these from the Planning Commission's point of view.
Okay. Anybody from the public who would like to make any comments about these changes? Hearing none, then I will close the hearing. Now.
Ian.
Yeah, I know, I know, I was just trying to decide whether it's going to skip up to the other conversation. We'll go to item 5B, the 35C LLC doing business as antidote second-class liquor license. Could I have a motion, please?
I have a motion.
Okay, it's been, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on this? Do you have any comments?
I don't know, he gets back there. I think he's just rescuing.
Yep.
I have a drawing, a sketch, if anyone's like trying to figure out the seating on that, the situation where it's going to be set out. The bar would be serving here, and this would be serving here. And this railing is the railing he spoke of.
Oh.
That will delineate between the first-class license and the second class. This will be the retail area.
So this is an hired hand, not an antidote?
This is an antidote. Well, hired.
Hired hand, upstairs, yes.
The bar was turning the wrong way. I was like, hold it.
Does that say, it says doing business as antidote, is that, does that, is that clear?
Well, he's licensed as hired hand, antidote slash hired hand. That's what his licenses say.
I know, but that's not what the agenda says.
LL, you know, 35C LLC.
That's his corporation.
35C LLC, that's his corporate name. Then he DBAs, antidote is what this liquor license, this second-class license says.
Yeah, so if you were to, if you were to research the Secretary of State's office, crack me from wrong, and he, and he actually has three DBAs. He has a DBA hired hand, a DBA antidote, and a third one, I think, that's called the antidote, if I remember correctly. So they're just DBAs, so you can have a ton of them, but so, but he, doesn't he have a, does he have one first-class license that covers both areas? That's what I thought, yeah. It's one.
All technicality of one restaurant. That has separated the two, so there'd be less confusion. The backside corner, we're at the drawing, where the growlers would be going. I've been talking with Jay about this for over a year and a half, almost, really two years. I think you guys passed me last year for this already once. We just didn't hit the mark because we hadn't had the production capabilities. Now we have the production capabilities. If you walk into hired hand, immediately to the left, we have those tabs.
Tabs have already been.
Tabs have been there, and they've never been hooked up. That's where everything's going to go. Inside, the cooler's already delineated. Literally, the only thing I need to do is bolt a stanchion into the floor, and then everything's up and done.
Okay. Is there no more comment? All those in favor of this license, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to, I'm going to move one of these items up for purposes of someone who needs to go to another meeting. So I'm going to move item E, conference room project lobby doors, up as the next item. They're in your packet there someplace. Do you want to stop this on?
So, so at the last meeting, you know, obviously, we're, we're moving along with the conference room project, and, you know, the city council allocated up to $10,000 from the water, from the water tower funds towards this project. And it's, it's not as though money's burning a hole in my pocket, but the current situation there with the double doors, that at one point needed to be rated doors, which is no longer the case any longer because the building has a sprinkler system. But we do see a, we do see a couple of things, two or three things, in no, in no particular order. One is, is that from a heat standpoint, we, we really don't, none of us heat the lobby and the stairway and the Opera House to the same temperature as the clerk's office, my office, the partnership slash ticket booth area. And so there is, there is a heat loss, if you will, that happens with the current doors, which have about a three-quarter inch gap between the two doors at the bottom and maybe five-eighths of an inch at the top. And it's my understanding, I wasn't working for the city at the time that those two doors were put in, but it's, but it is my understanding that they, they were intended to lock. I'm not so sure that they ever did lock, because I can't see any hardware at the base that ever showed that it would ever locked in, locked. And there was also some kind of a, another, Norm told me the name of it, I don't, I don't speak the language, but anyway, there was some piece of wood so that when those doors closed, there was some, a bit of an air gap, and it, it worked beautiful until the first time somebody closed the doors in the wrong order, and it snapped that right off, and that was the, that was the end of that. So first off, you know, part of this, you know, is a, an energy efficiency effort, all right, to some degree. Additionally, I'm a sunlight guy, all right? I really, I, I want the lights on bright all the time. And so if there's, those doors have these small glass doors because they're fire-rated doors, and I viewed this as an opportunity to get some additional light into that space. And if you've been in there recently and seen what we've got there, I mean, it's, I love it from a light standpoint, it's bright. So that's, that's that part. The other thing, there, there is a little bit of a safety concern under the current scenario. I think about, you know, somebody who is very short, or like a kid, if they were leaving Joan's office, if they are shorter than the bottom of that glass, I can tell you, you can, that kid can get hit right smack dab in the face by that door because you can't, can't see him. So I like the idea of having a glass door, just from a, from a safety, safety standpoint. Also, you know, the idea of having one door as opposed to two, it's not like we've got 200 people that need to escape from back in there, you just need to be able to get out. So, you know, the idea of a, of a, you know, you could, you could, from a code standpoint, according to my contact with the state, you could have a 36-inch door, but there is some wisdom in having, if you're going to reduce to one door, there is some wisdom to have a 40 or 42-inch door, if you think about moving furniture in and out, you know, it does, it does make a little, a little more sense. So, the, when my wife and I were up in the Williston, Williston area, this happened to be, Desabres, I got a quote to put something similar to this in there, which was $5,360. And then when it dawned on me, as I mentioned at the last meeting, you know, I, I don't think that the city paid for those doors, they were paid for by the Opera House, so might be a good idea to bring them into the loop. And so anyway, the picture that Desabres provided us, it looked like the front of the gymnasium at the high school, but this is a better, is a better picture of what I was wanting to do if you were to go to a steel-framed glass door at those double doors. And obviously, Susan's here, I've met with Susan and Norm, had some email exchange with Jerry and, and there is, from an aesthetic standpoint, Susan, you can speak better for me, but I'd say that you don't like this. Okay, so I, actually, you don't need to say anything, you can just move your head. I don't like. So anyway, so Norman was brought into, not, you know, really, this has never been a table pounder for me, really, I'm, it's, you know, one option is to do nothing. You can leave those doors there, we finish up the project, call it a day. That is, that is an option, it's an option. So anyway, we engaged Norman to, to take a look at it, and this is something that he came up with, you know, as, I think, Lynn, it was your words, maybe there's a compromise out there, out there somewhere. So, so, so really, here we are. I have, I really don't know what this cost, you know, it's not a, you know, we've spent two years doing this project, so it certainly is not a race in my mind, but at, at some point, we've got to deal, if you're not going to do anything, fine, we don't need to do anything. But if you want to do something, you know, some kind of decisions need to be made so that we can, we can move forward on this project, so.
Sue? Comments?
Sure. We are in total agreement that the doors could definitely be improved, there's no question. They should lock properly, they should be airtight, they should be attractive. And we're more than happy to work together with the council to come up with a design, materials. You know, we love the idea of, you know, some wood, but certainly could be plenty of glass that would let light in. Our real, we would be very interested in keeping the integrity of the design, the historical look and feel of the building. We think it's important to our donors, to our clients, to the community, to see that, you know, we, we do take a lot of pride in, in that building. And as a board, it's our mission to keep it in good shape. You know, we do put money into restoring, keeping that lobby in good shape, we finish the floors, we take care of the wallpaper, we, you know, really think we, but definitely the doors could be upgraded, and now's the time that, you know, we have no objection whatsoever. You know, we'd like to participate if it, when we finally do get a proper quote, you know, we could sit down again and, you know, talk about it, participate in, in getting that done.
So I take it that we're not going to be taking any action at this meeting? That it's going to do a little bit more work? I, because I do see some, there was a photo of the one here that was in the Terry Door, which I kind of like myself, but I assume that.
It's actually mahogany.
Is it mahogany?
Yeah, that's what Norman said.
Well, well, whatever it is, I mean, it looks nice, but probably not something that could be used in this particular instance because the wood that's in the Opera House is not that.
No, that's a double-door concept, that when all this first started, you know, Mel was gathering pictures, Norman was gathering pictures, and, you know, now we're starting to get to.
The focus.
Something that, you know, looks like what we both would be comfortable with.
I'd like to lean toward a single door with side lights and wood.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
I think that's what.
Yeah.
And that's, so that's what his conceptual design is, so it would be a matter of, if that kind of a design is a design that is, that we like, then it's just a matter of selecting wood that would, would go.
Well, I think that what, I accidentally ended up in this meeting. I was there talking policy, or personnel policy, and the meeting happened, so I just got to sit there. And the, the next page in the, or minutes, is the $5,800 was if we, was Norm's thought, if we restored the current doors, it would cost just under $6,000. And then something similar to that wooden double-door picture he brought in would be closer to seven. So I would think if we're doing a single wooden door with only half as much hardware and two stationary side lights, we're somewhere between six and seven.
And I don't, I don't think the, the issue at this point, it's hard for me to say this, is not a money issue. It's that, it's that if we can come up with a design that everybody feels comfortable with, it blends with the building, that that would be the thing to do.
So, you know, I don't want to have a, you know, a heated negotiations here, but I'm trying, I am trying to keep this project somewhat on budget. So, you know, the, this 5,800, I got a quote, it was $5,360, all right? And basically, if at the end of the day, nobody really liked that, I don't want to say that's irrelevant, but, you know, okay, $5,360 for glass steel-framed doors, that's what it costs. To refurbish what we've got here at 5,800, what I'm wondering about is, you know, do you suspect that the Opera House would fund, because I, I think that this is more than 5,800, I don't know how much more, but do you think that the Opera House Board would fund anything in excess of 5,862 dollars?
Well, I'm not authorized to say, yeah, go ahead, but.
You aren't?
I am the treasurer, however. You know, I think within reason.
So what I, you know, I guess what I'd, what, if, if, what we will do is we will instruct Norman to, to continue to move, to hone in on pricing, because it really, the door, you know, this thing gets a little complicated, because this is a custom-built, the whole thing is, is custom-built. So we, we need to move forward quickly, so, so that's what we'll do. And we'll come back to you and, and with, hopefully, what we've agreed on, with any luck.
Yeah, just for the record, Norman is our official consultant on the, the building, architecture and design, and he's working for us pro bono, is the agreement we have with him. So there's no architectural fees or anything included in it.
Okay, well. When a little bit more work is done on this, and we'll come back to the council, and we'll move on from there. Thank you, Susan. Okay, we move on to item 5C, 2018 swimming pool budget and rates.
So I put together a, a proposed slash draft budget here for you, which shows the expenses in 2016, 2017, and my proposed budget in 2018. And you will see an overall reduction in my proposed budget, but I will put an asterisk next to that, and that is, when you look at the bottom, we did end, we ended the 2016 season with just under $2,000. We ended the 2017 season with $8,178, which is really a combination of a lot of things. You know, better staff, hour management, you know, the chemical expense should jump off the page for you. This year, it was handled through our wastewater treatment plant, and so I, I don't know that we necessarily did that for, to save money. We did it more about, I think we could do better from a water quality standpoint if we had the wastewater treatment plant folks take on that responsibility. And anyway, we ended up really with improved water quality and, and saving some money in chemicals. I will tell you, it's a little bit distorted because some of the chemicals were, were in inventory, all right? So we don't have an inventory of chemicals there, so some of it is, it's, it's, you know, there might, there, I can tell you, there probably was $500 worth of chemicals in there, and that's why I'm not suspecting it's going to cost 2,500, I'm suspecting it's going to cost 3,000 because of the, of the chemicals that were in inventory. So one of the things I have not, I have not put a number in here for capital purchases. And the reason why I did that is because I know that Rennie is going to be, under his report, presenting a Sam Fishman Swimming Pool Advisory Committee, I call it SPAC, the Swimming Pool Advisory Committee. But Saratoga, I think, has already stole, stolen that, but it will, we could try it. So anyway, you know, so my point is, is what I've put together here for you is really an operating budget. There's no, there's no capital expenses here. I remember, Matt, a year ago, you were not wild about increasing the watershed allocation from nine to 11, and I, if I remember you saying, well, you know, how about, can we, can't be budget 11, but. can't be budget 11, but maybe only put nine and put two later and whatever? And I was saying, oh, you know, well, that isn't really how we operate. But anyway, one of the things, so you'll notice here that I'm proposing that the water, the watershed allocation be reduced from $11,000 to $6,000. And if, and if anybody's wondering, like, well, where are you coming from, Mel? I mean, I'll tell you where I'm coming from, and that is, the first five or six years that the city operated the pool, that was the allocation. We allocated $6,000 from watershed funding to help supplement, if you will, the pool operations. And when the pool got a little bit in trouble financially, you know, where do we grab from? And for the last, for a couple of years, it was $9,000. This spreadsheet really goes way, way to the left here if I wanted to, but anyway, there's a probably three year, two or three years at $9,000, and then at $11,000. And I'm suggesting that we drop back to $6,000, and, and for two reasons. One is, I think that's all that we need to allocate from an operating standpoint, number one. Number two, I've always felt that that allocation should have some relation to the discount, if you will, that we provide to Virgin's residents, all right? So, when, when people buy a seasons pass, if you're, there's a rate for Virgin's residents, and there's a rate for non-residents. When people sign up for lessons, there's a rate for residents and there's a rate for non-residents. And, and the reason why there's a delta is because Pantan, Walton, Ferrisburg, Addison, Shalott, whatever, they're not, they're not reaching into their till and giving the city any money. And if you calculate the discounts, of which we do, it equals about $3,000 a year. So, even, even with a $6,000 allocation subsidizing, using Virgin's money to subsidize Virgin's, you know, the subsidy really is, there really is an outright $3,000 subsidy, because the discounts only, only equal $3,000. So, so again, what this budget does is just an operating budget, and like I said, that $8,000, it's, we're in very good shape, but we have expenses that, that are staring at us down at the pool, you know, including not, but not limited to the roof. We need to install hot water in the, in the, in the bath house, and so there's some other expenses there, of which, you know, more than likely, you would have to kind of, you're not, I don't know that you're done dealing with this swimming pool budget, because I don't like, I don't have the list, because I really think that what is envisioned is that the advisory committee is going to give, you know, the city manager, pool director, and the city council some guidance as to what is needed at the pool, and, you know, some of that $8,000 is, is one source of money. Watershed money is another, another source, source of money. So, so, you know, I'm, you know, from an operating standpoint, this is, this is my recommended operating budget for the 2018 season.
Any questions about the budget?
I also know there's, we were going to change over all of the toilet paper holders, towel holders, put in baby changing stations and so on, and this, and I think that comes up to around $800, which I have to give you the paperwork on, by the way.
I have that paperwork.
Do you do? Okay. And, so I think that that's probably going to be one of the more immediate, I don't know whether I would call it a capital improvement, but just improvements that needs to be done.
All the filters that were being dealt with this week.
Mm-hmm.
Exactly.
So, you feel this is realistic for what needs to be done?
Just from pure operating. It doesn't, it doesn't buy-
Right.
Toilet paper, paper toy, it doesn't, it doesn't buy baby changing stations, it doesn't buy roofs, it doesn't buy, it doesn't buy anything. You know, that is a, a decision that, you know, there, there needs to be some kind of a priority list made and, and proposed and acted upon.
So, is that what this SPAC group is going to do?
I love that. That's kind of nice.
Although there, I'm trying to recall, I was looking through my paperwork to see whether I could find it, because I thought in the report that the previous committee did, that there was some, some recommendations relative to things that needed to be done, as I recall, but I couldn't find it, so I couldn't bring it with me tonight to say, well, the previous, the reason I'm doing the committee, it's not, it's really not a new committee, other than the fact that I gave them a written charge as to what they're supposed to do. But when you have a changeover of mayors, since it's a mayor appointment for, for the committee, then, then the new mayor has to appoint that committee. So, I'm really kind of reappointing people that were on the committee. I'd like to add to it at least one more person, and we need to get somebody from the city council, but I'll get to that later on. So, I guess that group would be convening to at least look over the report from the last group and see how accurate that is to move forward with, with various things for the pool.
So, one of the things, you know, you know, if, let's say that the city council wanted to at least consider some action tonight, more definitive, you know, there is, that number, that $8,178.99, that's real. That's, that's your, that is real money, all right? And I'm not suggesting that, that you get that by moving $8,178 over into the capital and, and spending yourself back to zero again, but I think that the city council should, should, should think about a number out of that eight that would go into capital purchases, so that you at least know the, you know, some idea as to what, you know, how long that list, you know, can be afforded.
So, I would actually like to suggest that we accept this budget as presented with a $5,000 allocation to capital purchases.
And additional?
From this $8,000. So, what it does is, if that was to pass, then that means the budget's $56,000. It's no different than what we do with, with setting the tax rate. You know, you're, you're really, you know, using $5,000 of your $8,000 fund balance and putting it into, allocating it towards capital purchases for this department.
Okay.
And that does not, that does not rule out other capital allocations from the watershed.
Okay, that's a motion if somebody's seconded. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, now we've got discussion, and I'll get to you, Susan.
Just one more question. When do we anticipate the SPAC proposal as to capital needs for 2018?
I, I don't know. When I've contacted folks to see whether they wanted to be reappointed, there was a question about timeline. I said, I don't, I don't have a timeline. I guess I would expect the committee to have set its own timeline on those things. I would imagine that some, some meeting should be fairly soon because there are things that need to be done this year. And they may not be the most major things, because things like replacing the roof and that sort of thing, which is, is a major capital improvement, probably needs a little bit more planning than just doing it now. But, so, I guess the group would be convening relatively soon.
All right, it's also, when we finally drain the pool and find out what's there, that's going to drive some costs to, hopefully, it all is wonderful, and we just have a couple of buckets of cement to deal with, but it's under green water, so we don't, don't know.
I mean, such significant traction last year on, you know, A, building a very collaborative approach as to how to maintain this asset, and then some very personal involvement in, in getting it up to speed. So, I'd really urge that we, you know, get that capital request in front of us as soon as possible, so that we can get it by purportory, so we can keep the momentum going, I mean.
Lisa, did you have a question?
I was just wondering if Mel could speak to what, what is included in the operating budget? Does that include pool passes? Is that-
Well, the, the, when I say operating budget, so- You can hear, yeah, yeah. I mean, basically, the budget, the budget is, the budget is comprised of, you know, projected revenue and projected expenses. So, you can, you know, I don't know what you're looking for specifically. One of the things, you know, obviously Lisa and, and Sue are affiliated with swim team, and let me just explain to you how swim team works, is that it is, it's, it is a little strange how, how the swim team functions, if you will, it's not, still, something we inherited. And that is the, all, every member of the swim team, we'll get into rates in a second, every member of the swim team has to have a pass, all right? And every member of the swim team is to be registered for the team, and there's a registration fee. And so, like, in this, when I put this budget together, I was using the assumption of 100 kids at $75 a kid, all right? And now, I've received an email from Michelle that there is, the board may have took, taken some action of raising that fee to $85 per kid with a maximum of $225, and I've written back to her, she's in Florida, and written back to her about, just kind of wondering about the rationale to that, and, but really, you know, the, the swim team registration fee is something that has historically been determined by the board. You'll notice on my rates memo, you don't see anything about fee, but I do think that it's, you know, I think everybody in the room would, would agree that it is a, you know, it's a public swim team, and therefore, everybody, it should be affordable, and so, nobody should be excluded from being on the swim team because of money, and I think, and it's always been that way. They somehow, people are able to be on that team. But anyway, getting back to the way that the money works, if you, you'll notice in this budget, it says $7,500. The assumption was, the assumption was 100 kids at $75 last year. They had 122 on the team, all right? There was times when it was less than 100. And if you go down to swim team coaches and assistant coaches, you see $3,600 and $3,350, and when you add that up, you don't get to $7,500. And the reason is, is because when we settle up with the pool, we add in FICA and MEDI and workers' compensation and settle up. And so, like, last year, if you notice, if you notice, the swim team fees in 2017 was $8,325, thus the 122 kids at 75, and it's not that straight math, because you got the family discount. And if you go down to the wages, last year, I think you operated with like two, two head coaches. You had a shared thing of head coaches, the way it was done. So, the coaches, that $4,050 and the $2,191, you add that together, and then add FICA, MEDI, workers' compensation, you come up with a total, you subtract that from the $8,325, and we ended up cutting a check to the swim team for that $2,766. So, you know, if we collect more, if more money is collected than, than is expended in wage-related expenses, we send a check back to, you know, back to swim team. Conversely, you know, if they don't have many, as many people on swim team, then there's a shortfall, and a couple of years ago, that shortfall ended up being covered by this, by the city out of the watershed fund. So, but anyway, it's expected, it's really, it's expected to be really a wash, if you will, and you settle up at the end of the, end of the year. It's a little odd, but anyway, that's how it's done. Been doing it that way since 2010.
But we do have a motion on the floor for this budget with the addition of $5,000 in the capital purchases line, which would bring, what's the total again?
$56,000.
$56,000. Yes, Sue?
I'm sorry, I just, I wanted to just clarify. So, are you proposing a rate increase in this, for the pool passes and the daily fees in this budget?
The answer is no. If you look at the next page of your- Not you. Not you, but the next page is a rates memo, and I'm, I, I'm not recommending an increase in seasons pass rates or daily rates, I'm not.
So, we have, we're going to do, do those as two separate things, so, so we do have a motion on the floor for the, the budget. Any further discussion?
Just with the head coach and assistant coaches, actual 17 was about $5,000, and actual, or budget 18 is almost $7,000. Is that-
I'm sorry. My, my eyes were one line off. The, the head coach is $918. I said $2,191, and I had my eyes on social security. So, $918 plus $4,050. You add that together, that equals less than $5,000. You add the, you add the social security.
I'm just looking at, so why are we bumping almost $2,000? Or is there going to be another coach this year?
I don't have a clue.
Okay.
I don't have anything to do with, I don't, I don't really have anything to do with hiring, hiring coaches.
Got it, okay.
You know?
I just didn't know if there was something I was missing, or if it was just best guess.
You're, you're not missing anything.
Okay.
All right. Actually, what's missing is Michelle's in Florida, all right? And Michelle and I have a, we, we communicate, but I really don't think that hiring coaches hasn't totally been settled yet. Is that fair to say? Okay, so that's part of the, you know, the whole head coach thing, it's just, and it's a wash anyway.
It was $3,000, and it was $1,000, and it was $3,000. So, I didn't know if there was something that I missed in, in discussion, or if it's just best guess.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nobody's opposed. Thank you for approving that. So, now we'll go to the pool rates. You have a page on that, and as Mel has just indicated, there, he has not proposed changing the rates, that they are the same. So, if somebody would give me a motion about the rates, as proposed?
Proposed rates? What, numbers or just-
No, well, no, just that, and I need a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion on the rates? Any comments on the rates from you folks? No? Okay, well, then we'll move right along. All those in favor of the rates as proposed, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. All right. We will now move on to amendments to the personnel policy. And in your packet, you had the, the many-page final version, I think, the final version, or at least-
On my computer, it's called a 2018 Personnel Policy Update with MK Suggested Edits.
Oh, okay. And so, I would take a motion to amend the personnel policy as proposed.
I'll make that motion.
It's been moved and-
I'll second it.
Seconded, okay. Okay, comments about the personnel policy?
I would just like to comment that I appreciate the work that everyone put into this. I'm really happy to see that this has happened. It's well done.
It looks very good.
Yes, thank you, everyone.
And it's supposed to be easier for Joan, too, right, Joan?
It's supposed to be. Don't worry about it. Find out.
I, I, I had a, I had a few possible changes, but Mel talked me out of them, so I'm okay with that. All right. Any other discussion on the personnel policy? If not, all those in favor of the personnel policy, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nobody's opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Report of the City Manager's Search Committee.
Yes, on Thursday of this week, we are going to screen the three finalist candidates that we have. They have asked to have their identity remain confidential at this time, which we're happy to do until such time as we present them to the council. At the next council meeting, the committee will have a suggestion for how the interview day will run, and we will present it to you then. We've been working on questions and building that, and I think doing a really great job. It's been a fun committee to work on.
That's about it. All right. Any questions? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the new item added, the rapid flashing beacons. Apparently, something has changed, because we, we had decided on those. This is related to, you know, we, we put in for a grant for five of these beacons, four of which are on Main Street, and we got the grant, and so, we have to move forward in, in purchasing and installing these, and so, Mel?
It also affects the streetscape project as well, because there's also, there's a sixth set. One is in the, in the Northern Gateway Sidewalk Extension Project with that bulb out, and then the other five- the other five is the other, is the other grant. So, if you all remember, and I don't know if this was ever shown to you, but I've given you a couple of sheets here, but this particular plan here was, I can tell you, this is what I envisioned, you know, when we applied for the, the five sets. I'm not so sure that we even, I can't remember if we talked about the bow bout and the crosswalk all that much when we went after that grant two years ago. But anyway, it's in there now. So, anyway, at, at, we ended up with this patent issues, not us, but there was a patent issue related to the flashing bar. And so, that's why I had to bring this to the city council, for the city council to choose between option one and option two. And the city council voted on option two. And unless you are in love with option two, I would suggest that you consider reversing yourself on option two and returning to what the original idea was, was with the bar. But if you love, if you love that.
So, you're saying the patent is no longer a problem?
That's not a problem any longer. Okay? So, like I say, if you, if, if, you know, I, there was, I brought you option one and two for a reason, because of the patent, all right? And you selected two. If you love that, it can stay in the contract for the North Main Street Project and the rest of the projects. Or if you felt you were pushed into option two because the original was not available to you, then that's why I'm bringing this back to you tonight. And I, and I don't know, I don't know that I have real strong feelings one way or the other, but I, but I will tell you that in our meeting today, I've got a meeting about the North, North, Northern Gateway Sidewalk Project and I just asked V-Trans. V-Trans says that the bars are more effective. Okay? So, I, I, because I think that the, the beacons, people feel that it's a caution light and, and, and so, okay, so it's a caution light. Whereas the bar, you know, people are learning that a flash bar means pedestrian. So, I think that there is some, some logic to, to returning to the original thought. But like again, if you love option two, we go option two.
Well, sure. Well, the, the new option that is now legal to, to use is what I also envisioned when, when we put in the grant. That's what I thought we were going to get. And actually, I was kind of surprised that we, we couldn't at the time, but that's the way the rules go. And so, I would, I would say that I'm in favor of going to the origi, what I consider the original design, but.
Which was option one?
No, it was this one. It's, it's an entirely new option.
Yeah. This is really the original, the original plan. And then there was this option one, option two. Option one is the Christmas tree type, yeah.
So, two questions now, were, was the sixth RFB in the grant that we received or is there gonna be a way to offset that sixth one because this is less expensive than this option? Make sense?
So, so first off, we have two grants.
Yep.
All right? The Northern Gateway Sidewalk Extension Project includes a bow bout in front of the police station for a crosswalk. That is what I call site number one, or site number one for two of those. The, the grant for the five sets, which includes West Main Street at Panton Road, McDonough Drive, Maple Street, City Hall, and what I call the Bermuda Triangle, which is the King Street, the King, New Haven Road intersection. Money-wise, you know, I, I really, I don't know, I don't know the delta. You're wondering about the delta between option two and, and this here. And I think, I think that these are a little more expensive. This here is a little more. I don't, I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a deal breaker. And I, when we applied for the money for the, for the, the rapid, for the, the five sets, the, that project is $75,000. There's, the city council allocated 70, $37,500 from the Water Tower Fund to be matched with this $37,500 grant. We really don't have a perfect handle on the scope of this project yet because we're, we don't know if, whether or not it's as simple as just pulling the old signs out, putting the new ones in. All right? If it is, we just need to find the manufacturer, tapco's the manufacturer, order, order five sets, all right? You could order a six, but it goes with a different project through another, through a contractor. And then whether or not we do need to, we may need to, because the, it may, we may not be able to simply do that because this is a V-Trans grant. And so, and before you do anything, you gotta go to V-Trans and make sure that they agree with what they're, what you're doing. And so, let's say that out there, and I don't know if this was contemplated, Rennie, but let's say out there in the field, some of these existing intersections don't meet ADA. All right? They've gotta meet ADA. And so, this may not be just simply a post sticking in the ground. It may require some additional work. Project management, not eligible. So, anytime that David Crawford spends on this, and he has spent a little bit of time, all right? Not eligible. If, if we do have to have some engineering done, a little bit of drawings or whatever to satisfy V-Trans, not eligible. You know, I know that the city council allocated $37,500 from Water Tower Fund money. I get that. And it's very possible that the way, although this was maybe originally envisioned, that you spent $75,000 on this nuts, nuts and bolts stuff and it lands here and you put in your request for reimbursement and you, that costs 75,000 and I say Jimmy Laro, go pop these in, that works, all right? But if you can't do that, then there is some other expense. So, it's very possible that we might spend 30,000 on the equipment. And if you spent 30,000, let's say that you spent $60,000 on the equipment, 30,000 is gonna be covered by the grant, 30,000 is gonna be covered by Water Tower Fund, there's still $7,500 left over that would be used for project management and ADA compliance thing. So, the, the water, you, the Water Tower Fund has still only spent its 37.5, but we left some money on the table with the grant and it, and it happens, you know? Okay?
Just so we don't have to talk about this at another meeting. I see there's an option of round poles or square posts. What is the, what is the plan?
What do you like? Yeah, yeah.
I don't know.
That'll be, that'll be, that'll be a installation decision.
That this one here, you know, has a control panel. Some of these are actually run by AC, but I, I think that there's an option. I can tell you that our spec, I believe, is just a square pole.
That's what it looks like here.
Yeah.
Okay, we. Discuss this enough? So, I can't recall, did I get a motion yet on this? No.
I would move to go with the original plan for the flashing lights.
That's, that's this one, right? Okay. You'll have to figure out how to describe this in the minutes. Okay.
Option three, yes.
Option three. And it's been seconded. Hopefully no more discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nobody's opposed. Thank you. Let's move on. All right. We did the public hearing. We had no comments, so we're on to item 5H, Amendments to the Zoning and Subdivision Regulations. And I guess I need a motion to approve those amendments.
I'll make that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any comments? And remember that you could still change it, but we have, we start a whole series of hearings again. No comments. All those in favor of the amendments?
Did someone move it?
What? Yep, it's been moved and seconded. Yep, yep. All those in favor of the amendments as proposed by the Planning Commission, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. City Managers' Report.
So, Budget Report, you know, obviously not all that different than what you saw when you looked at, saw how short the list of warrants were. And then, you know, you could tell that's not gonna have a lot of impact. I will tell you that, that the Police Department budget is actually a little better than what appears in your packet. And the reason is, is that, is, and I, and I, and I ran the Police Department expenditures. There's eight or nine pages sitting up at the copier, because that was the last thing that I did before I came to this meeting. Joan and I actually, this is, you know, we routinely do a little bit of internal auditing, if you will, to make sure that grants are being handled properly. And we actually ran into a couple of instances in the Police Department. And, and I can tell you, I mean, tell you how this happens. I wanna pay vendors, all right? I really, when you get a bill to the city of Virgens, we wanna get them paid, all right? And that's not like we don't care about the coding, but we have a wicked bias about paying vendors because it's never a vendor's fault if we can't figure out the coding, all right? If we can't figure out what part is eligible under a grant or whatever, it's not the vendors, shouldn't be the vendor's responsibility. I want them paid. And what happens sometimes is when a vendor gets paid and then we take a look at the grants and, and we, there's, there are a lot of people involved with grants, all right? You know, there's typically at least two or three people in the Police Department. And then there's Joan and me. And I'm paying the bill and somebody else is putting out the request for reimbursement and Joan's taking the money and she puts it in a bucket, all right? And sometimes she's gonna put it in a bucket that she thinks it goes in because I'm not around to ask the question and I might, might not know the answer anyway. So, every so often, we drill down on these things to make sure that we have these grants absolutely balanced. And in two instances, to the tune of, I don't know, $2,000, $3,000, I'm gonna say, something like that, Joan. One was, there was a $1,490, $1,747.90, remember that number? Yeah, okay. We actually, you know, Joan got that money and I could only find $535.60 that was spent that she got reimbursed for. And so, we had to backtrack and find out where were the other expenses and what did they get charged to so that we could do a journal entry to get it back charged against the grant, took care of that. So, that was, whatever, 1,200 bucks we found, right, you know, be able to write to the bottom line on the Police Department. And then the other one that we did was a $912.75, which wasn't one item, it was actually two. It's easier for us to find if it's one item, we can find it, but actually two, and it just happened that I was able to catch two numbers on a big list of numbers that they, the two looked like they equaled when you added them to be 912.75 and sure enough, they, they were. And so, the bills to intoximeters was covered and that's got moved. So, the point is, is that you probably have a, a budget for the police that shows an over expenditure in the supplies and equipment, right, Matt?
Correct.
$1,083 or something, $10,083 on a $10,000 budget, all right? And, and my budget, after doing, doing these adjustments, with a $10,000 line item, the expenses are $9,170, all right? And so, it's just, and really, I'm not gonna find another one of these. I mean, we're probably done, but, but this is the kind of news that, this is the kind of news that we like to, like to see. The other thing is, I sent an email out, you know, obviously, we, we have a workers' compensation audit every year. It's on a calendar year basis. The Fire Department has done separately than all of the rest of us. And I know that the, the Fire Department audit showed that they owe us $1,350, $40. And I said, you know, where's my money? Because last year, they, they sent it in October. I don't know why it takes 10 months to get you your money. But anyway, so I bugged them a little bit. So, the Fire Department is actually 1,200 better than what you see here. And the general fund, and I really think that most of it is police, that the general fund employees, the workers' compensation audit for 2017 results in them owing us about $4,000, most of which is police. So, when that check comes in, that will offset that work, workers' compensation, okay? So, I'm not claiming victory, Matt, okay? I'm not, all right? But I, I really, you know, I think there were, we're, we're getting there. So, and, so anyway. And I think maybe in another.
I'd like to administer this meeting.
Sure. Okay.
Audit Report, Fieldwork.
I just wanna let you know, obviously, my last day is July 24th, not the 25th, it's July 24th. And so, one of the things that I did is I got in touch with Father Gil Sagalian Valley to see if there was any way that we could schedule their fieldwork earlier than normal. And they've agreed to come to City Hall on July 18th. I mean, obviously, they'll do as much as they can. You know, I mean, I'm not, I'm not moving to Australia, you know, you know, but anyway, this, that is really important to, that they would do that for us, all right? So, the fieldwork and we, that actually put some pressure on, put some pressure on us that we have 18 days to, or 17 days to get prepared, when normally we have 90 days to get prepared. But, but anyway, that's part of the reason why we're doing what we're doing now with these grants, getting all these grants all balanced, is because we don't wanna wait until July 17th to do it. So, at least the fieldwork, fieldwork will be done.
1272 order.
1272 order. So, we did, I think I put it in your packet. It really isn't any different than what I showed you before. And so, we have received our 1272 order. And if you read through this, that's some real late night reading, there is, we need to be moving into the planning phase of, of ridding ourselves of sanitary sewer overflows. One of the things that I've already done is I've submitted an application to the Agency of Natural Resources for a planning grant of $50,000 to institute this process. And my goal is to, and I, and I, we're, we're on the priority list. Any municipality that has overflows is on the priority list, but to be able to receive money, you gotta put in an application. So, that's into, my contact person is Tom Brown. Soon as we get the paperwork squared away, we will have that. It's, I didn't mean to use the word grant. It's actually an advance. They're gonna advance us $50,000, which will have to be repaid at some point if and when you do a project. So, it's really, it's really an advance. And so, we're preparing a request for qualifications, hire an engineer, and more than likely, you know, I'll be here in time to go through the process of, you know, Rick and I going through the process of engaging an engineer, but then I'm out, I'm, I'm gone. But at least you'll be in place and, because you have to submit a report to them within, I think, 18 months. So, you know, really, you can't wait around. So, that's why I've, I've gone ahead and done that. So, that's that one. All right? Other topics of interest, of which I have only like seven or eight, actually. I think last time, last time, I think I said I got none, all right? So, what was my, what was my, oh.
The traffic study, the truck traffic.
Oh, sure. Okay. I didn't, sure. So, one of the things that's just pool, not pool related, it is pool related. Mary Johnson's Summer Rec Program, not running in Virgens this year, but Thunder Care, which is the local program that Tara Brooks runs, I would assume will be bigger this year. So, just, if you, that was not on your rate sheet, so that's not there. Let's go, we'll go to this truck route. I sent this to Shannon, you know, I went on, I went on vacation, I was in the Carolinas in the first part of Mar- in the first part of March, and I do have my phone, you know, I might even have my laptop, but I can tell you, I'm golfing, I'm not, I'm not really looking at, looking at email, and so, when I come back to, when I came back to work, you know, I got 150 emails, all right, and I gotta like pick and choose what I'm reading, and I can tell you, there was, there was an agenda from Josh, don't abide in, about Thursday's tack meeting, and I knew Brent, Brent Rakowski was going to go to the meeting, so I don't need to read the frigging agenda. Well, anyway, what was on the agenda was a review of an RFP for a truck route study of, of trucks on 22A, all right? So, anyway, the Addison County Regional Planning Commission has received a grant, I think it's how it works, of $100,000 to study truck traffic on Route 22, particularly as it affects Virgin. This was released on April 10th, and obviously, you met on April 10th, but I didn't, I didn't know about it, so, they're going through this process of, of hiring an engineering firm, and there is going to be some kind of a team, an oversight team, Rennie, so I don't, I think at some point, you know, you know, if there is, they're...
We'll have a vote for involvement.
Yeah.
These is predominantly for Virgin.
Yeah, so, the, the submission deadline is May 11th, and so, I really think at the next meeting, we should probably keep this on the agenda, because I think that there likely needs to be participation from one or more members of the city council in this, in this process, so, so that was a bit of a surprise. The other, I got a telephone call today from Gary Holloway, the Park Street Streetscape Project got funded. Okay, so that's, that one, so I sent Rennie an email and sent Amy. Amy is somewhere near Arizona, is where I think she is, so I, I got a, I can tell she's in a car, because normally, she'd write me a long note, and all she wrote was "yippee", or something, something like that. I did, I sent an, I sent an email to Rennie and Amy and Sarah Strup, Straup and, and Sarah Cowan, to let them, let them know that now the pressure's on. Now the pressure's on. The, the meeting that I had today was the contract signing for the Northern Gateway Sidewalk Extension Project, and Don Weston, we have signed a contract with him. The contract, as I mentioned at the last meeting, is under $128,955. Their plan is to start on June 4th and be done by June 30th, okay? So, you're going to see some activity, and just so everybody knows, when you do a project like this on Route 22A, it is not going to be fun in this town, all right? You know, you know, you know what it's going to be like over there. So, Joan, if you think you've seen traffic on Moncton Road, you haven't seen anything yet until, until this thing gets going, because on occasion, it will be reduced to one lane traffic, you know, on, on occasion, so, but fortunately, Don Weston is a get-in-and-get-out project, so, so that's that one. The other thing I wanted to just let you all know, some of you have popped into City Hall, taken a look at our conference room project that's coming along at a, continues to come along at a snail's pace, and one of the things that I have done is because, sometimes there is an advantage to, to not finishing a project real fast, and that is, with the state, if you have a construction permit and you haven't finished, you can put in amendments for the, for the permit and keep it going. So one of the things that I've done, I explained this to Rennie, is I've actually, in the anticipation, anticipation of me leaving, all right, and my big table is going to leave, that if my office is to return to two spaces, then I've already submitted this to Josh, so that if, you know, I'm not really planning on doing the project, because I'm going to just keep, keep working, but I wanted to get that in place, that if that's something that you, you know, wanted to do, then you've got the permit to do that, and it's, and it's a use it, use it or lose it. I think that's all I got, Rennie.
Okay. Mayor's report, I'm going to move along as quickly as I can. First of all, with that traffic study, it was really good to see that, that came along, because I was about to, actually, at this meeting, say to the council, I think it's time for either me to draft the letter on your behalf, or just me sending a letter to V-Trans and saying, let's, let's get this moving, you know, we haven't heard anything that V-Trans is doing, and this comes at a very good time. I probably don't need to do that kind of a letter at this point, because V-Trans will just say, look, we just funded this, this study, let the study do its work, and we'll see what comes from that. So the only thing I have is the Sam Fishman Memorial Swimming Pool Advisory Committee, and I think I had mentioned before, because when you change over from mayors and so on, if it's a mayoral appointment, then the new mayor has to appoint, and you have in your packet the charge of the committee, so that's what they are supposed to do as a committee, and I will be appointing the people that you see on that list. It's Michelle Echols, who will not be chair this time, Lisa Casey, who's here, who will be chair. I am appointing Ken Sullivan, although I haven't heard from him, and I haven't heard from Shannon Atkins, and I will be appointing her also, unless they say no, then I'll have to look for somebody else. The two other members that I need to find is, I need to have someone from the city council on that advisory committee. I was the one that was on the city council. I don't think I should be on it now that I'm mayor, but if one of you have an interest, it would certainly be good to have a council member person on that committee, and I'm looking for one other person. And if you have any suggestions as to who you might think that would be, not necessarily at this meeting, but, because I can make this appointment at any time.
I think I should have a student or a member of the swim team as part of the council, committee.
Oh, that's a good idea. Any member of the council interested?
I'll do it.
Okay, great. Then you're appointed. Pays the same. I was thinking of doubling it myself. Okay, well, that's it for the mayor's report, so, an adjournment would be...
What the heck? How are we going to do this?
Oh, that's right.
Who seconded it?
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.